Okay. Alright Amanda, what's your question?
Could you explain the three parts of transcend-
Ah, explain the three parts of the transcendentalism. I like transcendentalism, don't you? Okay, who wants to take a stab at it?
You've got you-
You have you, nature-
And higher power.
And a higher power. Fantastic, what else can you tell me?
That was all based on what you could logically work out in your own mind. That's how they defined, I guess, truth.
Okay, it was what you could work out in your own mind? How they defined truths? Was there... Who was the leader of transcendentalism? Or who were the leaders? You gotta, you have to speak up because they couldn't hear last time.
Ralph Waldo Emerson.
Okay.
And his buddy who lived in the woods.
Oh, his buddy who lived in the woods. Ralph Waldo Emerson and his buddy who lived in the woods. Who was the buddy who lived in the woods?
Thoreau.
Thoreau, thank you. Henry David Thoreau. Who else was important in transcendentalism? Y'all have to come close because they couldn't hear last time. So questions and answers. And that's not close.
Yeah, I tried to-
Yeah. Okay, we're doing transcendentalism. The three tenants of transcendentalism. So for the benefit of the three who just showed up, what are they?
The three tenants-
Yes.
It, you, and nature.
It, okay, define it a little bit more. Okay, you guys have to speak up. Why don't you close the door and then you can shout? Okay. And Aiden got Ralph Waldo Emerson and his buddy who lived in the woods.
Thoreau.
Thoreau, thank you. And who else?
Mary Alcott.
Mary Alcott? Not Mary Alcott. But one of the famous writer, a famous woman writer. Fuller, yes, Margaret Fuller, very good. Okay. But you were also correct. Her father, who father who sat under the apple tree on the, uh, on the road and didn't quite accost people, but stopped people for hours on the road? Cause he liked to talk? Who was that? Amanda, you should know because you discussed one of the utopias. This is the gentleman who started one of the utopias. You wrote about it in eighth grade. Quite a few years ago, she says. Oh, come on, he's a character.
Hamilton.
No. His last name is Alcott. First name?
Thomas. Jefferson, no, Henry, Joe-
Okay. Starts with a B.
Bryan.
Oh my gosh. Thank you Bronson, yes, Amanda gets two points, yay, okay. Um, Bronson Alcott. Oh my word. Alright, who was one of the writers? Who would be accosted by Alcott on his way into Concord? He lived on the other side of Concord. No, it wasn't Emerson who tried to avoid him. It, it was somebody who was renting Emerson's, uh, family home. They're all tied together. One big happy transcendental family. Okay, he's one of the most famous writers that we have? American Renaissance? Ah, Alexis de Tocqueville was a very famous writer, but he was not an American citizen. What's that? Speak up, my friend. Nathaniel Hawthorne, thank you very much. Yay, Brianna. Yes. Okay, who were the other American Renaissance writers? Okay, Emerson, but- Emmer- he was a writer, um- But the genre, the fiction that was being written by Hawthorne and two of his buddies, um, or co- compatriots in, in writing, wrote a little bit differently than Emerson did. Right? How, what was the difference between their writings? Emerson and Thoreau and even Alcott wrote a little bit differently than Hawthorne and- We studied the other two writers. I can't hear you. Okay, Emerson and the transcendentalists wrote a little bit differently than the other famous American Renaissance writers of the time. How so? How did they write differently?
Oh, they wrote more in depth about certain subjects.
You need to come closer because I don't know that they can hear you. They were deep? They were all deep. They wrote about different subjects, what kind of different subjects?
They wrote mostly about not fiction, but-
Okay, everyday experiences, fiction, go ahead, can you open the door? Um, it was, it was all about- They, they wrote in a, in a, in a manner that- If you were studying dystopian literature, you might read. Okay? It's okay. Come closer, speak loud, very loudly. And we're discussing the difference between Emerson and some of the other transcendentalists versus Hawthorne, and I'm still looking for the names of two of the other famous authors of the time of the American Renaissance.
Edgar Allan Poe?
Yes, Edgar Allan Poe is one. The creepy one. The creepy one, the creepy, you're getting there, you're getting close, so how did they write?
Aren't the transcendentalists more about nature?
Transcendentalists were more about nature? Yes, um-
Oh, it was darker writing, it wasn't light and happy, it was all-
More, it was less- Yes, it was, it was less optimistic than the transcendentalists, thank you. And, and yes, there is the, the difference in, in the nature. The transcendentalists really wanted American settings, they wanted American ideas, they wanted American writings. Hawthorne and Poe and, uh, and Melville wrote, uh, they had settings in Europe too. Right? Or out on sea, on the, on the ocean. Okay? So, a little bit different than what the transcendentalists had identified as wanting for the American Renaissance, but it was still part of the American Renaissance, right? Hawthorne and Melville and Poe, Poe? Okay. Alright, so is everybody clear on what transcendentalism is? And how, how has it affected our lives in history today? Changed how everybody wrote. Makes English class work.
Good morning, Glanville students.
Oh, hold on, I'm gonna- Okay, so, sorry about that. What else? Where were we?
Barring English class.
Not barring English class.
Can you talk about the Second Great Awakening?
Ah, the Second Great Awakening. When did it start? Actually, it even started in the 1790s. The Second Great Awakening. But, the main part of the Second Great Awakening was when? And what's it mean?
Uh, it was when religion came back in and played a bigger factor. It was like the first great awakening, the age of-
Okay. Y'all need to speak up, so say it over.
Uh, religion came in and played a bigger factor in everybody's life.
But what do you mean it played a bigger factor in everyone's life?
Everybody kinda, they did their own thing for a long time, and then everybody started getting back together and forming- It had to do with reforming, a lot of religious things, and then they reformed the schools.
It had to do with reforming? Okay.
And then, um, yeah, like Derek said, they, uh, they jumped back to what they were doing. A lot of that.
They jumped back to what they were, I'm repeating because they can't hear.
Oh, okay. And then, um, didn't they form school boards? Actually, no.
Well, the sec-
Reformed the schools.
Right, that was the Age of Reform, and the Second Great Awakening was part of the Age of Reform. But Second Great Awakening, what's that?
The big revivals, they had the big creatures.
Yes, great big revivals, okay? So it started in the, started where?
North.
Okay, what-
Massachusetts.
Yeah, east, Connecticut, started in Connecticut. Went west, okay, where they, where they had tremendous revivals, right? Okay, and then what happened? It, it went back, okay? So, it, it traveled throughout the United States. But what were the ramifications from it? You hit on the, some of the ramifications of the, the Great Awakening, the Second Great Awakening. The reform, the reform of- Yes, but the Second Great Awakening really has to do with the, the religion. The schools, because everything was tied together, yes, it did have something to do with the schools, but-
Is that what led to transcendentalism?
Ah, is that what led to transcendentalism? That is an entirely different subject. Um, wouldn't, one that we don't have time to delve into. It does have something to do with transcendentalism because the reform that they were talking about, what did they do? I mean, you can look, hello, Second Great Awakening, chapter 10. Great Awakening. Okay, Eastern Revivals, critics of the revivals. Then you have Mormonism and the Shakers. Who was one of the leaders of the Eastern Revivals?
Was it William Dyer?
William Dyer? Not quite, not quite what your book is talking about, no. Google, Google does talk about different people. That's brilliant.
Well, wasn't it the guy that was like, one of the first ones that was like, all about- Maybe Robin Thunder features, things that were-
How, maybe I'm thinking of earlier, an earlier chapter. Timothy Dwight? Is that who they're talking about?
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't you look at some of the highlighted regions in chapter 10?
Charles Finney.
Oh, Charles Finney, thank you, Charles Finney. Okay. But was, uh, was the Second Great Awakening important? Yes. Okay, but why? We, we've discussed that it's part of the Age of Reform and there was reform, but what kind of reform? It was definitely an awakening. Of- Well, at least, at least- Okay, right, but-
A specific thing or like a general?
In general, in general. I mean, Samantha's got the book and so she's starting to read out of the book, which is what I'm trying to get you to- Think about.
Still like shaky and shaky and-
New, okay, new, the Shakers. Okay, so, so yes, it was important, so why did the Shakers? Who were they? What, what happened? Why?
Uh, they shook it up.
Yes, they shook it up. And, and what kind of things did they shake up?
They said that humans don't have a sin nature.
Ah ha, humans don't have a sinful nature. Okay, there's, there's something, you're, you're touching on something that's of, of importance here. During this time of, of, uh, reform, Americans were thinking differently.
Oh, they established like tight knit, um, groups.
They, they established tight knit groups and communities.
Um-
Where?
They produced furniture.
The Shakers, yes, the Shakers. They produced furniture, tight groups and communities, okay? But- It involved, yes, it was started by a woman, so it definitely involved women. Um, although men and women had to remain celibate, so separate. Okay? But what I'm, I'm looking for, the, the result from all this Second Great Awakening, it-
The belief that their destiny was in their own hands.
Yes, the belief that their destiny was in their own hands. Okay, so Americans are looking for, uh, destiny in their own hands, and they're taking the Second Great Awakening and they're creating paths to lead to that, right? They're creating, what's another one of the religions that was started? The Mormons, okay? Alright, the Shakers, those two were started in America. Alright? But they're, they're deciding that they can be in charge of their own destiny. And so their religion is taking on that form. And how important is that to people? It's pretty, pretty significant, pretty significant, isn't it? Yeah, okay? Which, you're right, it's tied to the Age of Reform because it just what, it wasn't in its own, uh, you can't separate it out, okay, because you had the temperance movement, you had, what else in the Age of Reform? I think you hit on most of them, you had temperance. Abolition.
Women's rights.
Women's rights. Okay?
Was there, um, abolition tied into like slavery and rape?
Abolition is all about slavery, yes. What is abolition?
Movement, destruction of slavery.
Destruction of slavery? Okay, trying to get rid of slavery, yes, abolishing slavery. So, who was one of the leaders in the abolition movement? One of the more vocal leaders? We talked about him, he actually burned the Constitution at one point. Ah, yes, William Lloyd Garrison, thank you, and how did he become such an outspoken leader of abolition? Ah, his paper, his newspaper, what was- The Liberator, yes, thank you Ivy. The Liberator. Okay, so how well-read was Liberator? Very well-read, yes, okay? Um, he was a fiery orator and, um, definitely, definitely one of the leaders of the abolition movement. Who were some of the blacks who were the leaders of the abolition movement? What's that? Yes, Frederick Douglas? And what woman is famous in the abolition movement? Okay, two of the women, Angelina and Sarah Grimkey. Alright, but how about, who's the black woman? Underground Railroad? Harriet Tubman, thank you. Truman was the president. Close, yes, close. Tubman, Harriet Tubman. Okay? And, so the Underground Railroad, was that important to the movement, the abolition movement? It was important to the abolition movement, scholars are now looking at the Underground Railroad and, and, um, saying that the Underground Railroad wasn't as, wasn't as effective and wasn't as large as the romantic idea of the Underground Railroad that you all learned about in elementary school? That it was, um, that it wasn't a, this huge, um, network. Uh, there was definitely, there was definitely a network, but it didn't make as large of an impact or wasn't as large, uh, compared to the romantic idea of the Underground Railroad, is what scholars are now saying. Does that mean that it was less significant? To the slaves that came up? No, no. Um. So, Harriet Tubman and Frederick Douglass have something in common, what would that be? Yes, they were runaway slaves. Very good. And so, they helped promote. Now, the abolition movement, you touched about the, um, and the Age of Reform, and the fact that you had women's rights and you had abolition, how were those two tied?
Uh, because the Grimkey sisters started of women's rights cause of the people that were-
They did it because they weren't allowed to sit on like the board at the abolition convention or something.
Okay, but it wasn't the Grimkey sisters who, who started it, the Grimkey sisters were all about abolition, right? Okay? And, yes, there were some women who were not, they were in a screened out section of the, the International Abolition Convention in London. Who were those two women?
Elizabeth Catty Stanton and Lucretia Mott.
Lucretia Mott and Elizabeth Catty Stanton, yes. Okay, and what did they go on to do? Those two women.
They organized the Seneca Falls Convention?
The Seneca Falls Convention, yes, they organized it, meaning that it, what, what came from the Seneca Falls Convention? And we may not have covered this in the-
But they said all men and women are created equal.
Ah, all men and women are created equal. Okay. So, getting back to the tie between, um, between the abolition movement and the women's movement, what happened with those two?
I think the women were expecting you to get their rights at the same time that the blacks were.
Okay, so the goal of many of the women was to gain women's rights at the same time the blacks gained rights. Okay. So, then what happened?
They kind of created separate spheres.
Okay, the separate spheres came into play, but, um, that is, yes, the separate spheres were an important part of women's life at the time, but what I'm looking for is something a little bit different, I'm looking for what happened, within the abolition movement with the women and with the men of the abolition movement. It, um, any ideas? How did women's movement really get started?
I think it was Seneca Falls Convention, they passed something that was like the Declaration of Independence.
Right, they, they passed, uh, I think it was 26, uh, treaties that they, that they wanted for women, but there was an important step within the abolition movement because everyone belonged to the abolition movement at one point, didn't they? All the women that we're talking about belonged to the abolition movement at one point. Any ideas Amanda? You're not alone. Okay. All of the women and the abolitionists all belonged to the same movement at one point. What happened at the end?
Uh, they got opportunities to work.
They got opportunities to work, but I'm, I'm talking about the movement itself. What happened within the movement itself?
Openly changed gender-based double standards.
What openly changed double standards? There are still double standards today, Brian. I myself have some in my house. Well, let me try a different question. Okay. Okay, um, William Lloyd Garrison allowed women in his organization, in his abolition movement, to hold offices. Did all men who ran the abolition movements, did all of them allow women to hold offices or to be involved in that way? No. So then what did the women do? Okay. The women realized at some point that um that they needed to have their own movement in order to gain women's rights. And some of the women stayed in the abolition movement and thought that they needed to gain blacks' rights before women's rights. Okay, so it splintered the American women's movement. Alright? This is what happened. So what other questions?
What's the difference between the Bank of the United States and the First National Bank? Which one did Hamilton like initiate or want? Are they the same thing?
They're the same thing.
Okay, cause you have it on there, you've got um Jackson and the Bank of the United States and then up above you got the First National Bank. Are those just the same thing or are those?
Well, Jackson was actually um which bank of the United States was it, the first or the second? With Jackson.
Second.
The second.
Okay, so the first is with Hamilton. And the second.
Mm-hmm, cause you have two national banks at that, up to this point. Okay?
And then what do you mean with the DeTocqueville and then in how she had Democracy in America?
Okay. DeTocqueville and his book Democracy in America, so tell me about DeTocqueville, we talked at length about DeTocqueville, didn't we?
He was a French writer who came over here?
He was a French writer who came?
To write about America.
To write about America, what about America, what did he wanna see?
He took an, like an outside view of um
He took an outside view of democracy in America, so, so his main goal in coming over and writing was all about
Spreading democracy.
Democracy, right? Okay?
He wrote about how we came up with like organizations and stuff to, to deal with problems that would I, otherwise be regulated either by the government or unregulated in other countries.
Okay.
And that there was
Okay. And the homework that I think only two people have turned in, DeTocqueville's information on um voluntary associations? Yeah?
It's in the book.
Oh, it's in the book? Oh. Just a short, you know, three, four sentences. Um, that's due, that was due last week. Voluntary associations, DeTocqueville.
Um, it's it's like the connections that Americans have, we thought it was really interesting. You know, and they have like organizational connections, but make connections and associations?
Okay, connections, we make connections, we make associations, do we do things without associations? Nah, DeTocqueville thought that we did, the only way we could do things was in some sort of association, right? Right? Okay, very good. Anything else? DeTocqueville? Couple chapters. Eleven, for sure. Any other questions? You have questions Amanda? Okay?
For the political parties?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know there's the Federalist and then Antifederalist and then they got like the Republicans in. And then, um, and then you have the two different Republicans.
Okay, can you speak up just a little bit? Gentlemen.
Okay, so the Federalist and Antifederalist and then the Republicans, two kinds of Republicans.
Ah, yes, two kinds of Republicans.
Um, were those the main like four parties or were there like Democrats?
There weren't really Democrats yet, were there?
Yeah.
Well, there was the Democratic Republicans, right?
But they weren't what we consider Democrat today yet.
Okay, there's another party that the Whig Party, okay? Right. So kind of the transitioning here with the tra- with the political parties, they changed dramatically, didn't they? It's fascinating to read about how they kind of morphed and used these, and, and had different ideals, not unlike the parties today where you have different ideals. Right? So who was the first person to really understand that a two-party system would be helpful in America? And used it to his advantage, no, not Adams. No, not Jefferson. This was, this was uh a person who um, who was pretty politically savvy and used it to help people and then himself. Gain power, huh? No, it wasn't Hamilton, it was after these, after everyone that you've talked about so far. Van Buren, Martin Van Buren, remember? Remember, Martin Van Buren worked behind the scenes and he really developed this two-party system. Um, and really, you know, that, that'd be a fascinating paper to write on about Van Buren and how he influenced the party system in, in America. Because he did.
Crazy hair.
Yes, crazy hair, okay? Okay, anything else?
So the utopian communities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, was that that wasn't exactly connected to transcendentalism, but it kind of was?
Uh, well, there was one utopian community that was directly connected to transcendentalism, do you know which one that was? Did you guys watch the rest of the video from that lecture? Maybe? Probably not? Um, Amanda, you, you know the name of this utopian? Transcendental utopian?
Is it Bronson Alcott?
It's Bronson Alcott, but what was the name of the utopia that he started? Close.
I know it dealt with pedotarians, but I don't know the name of it.
Okay, it starts with an F?
Talking about it all summer long, you had to go and teach us these places.
Fruitlands, yes, good job Amber. Um, thank you Amanda. Yes, Fruitlands was one of the transcendental utopias. But there were other utopias. Um, we talked about another one which was Brook Farm, thank you, yes, yes, yes. And where are these utopias? Or where were they? They still are? Massachusetts, where? Who uh, everything's kind of close to Concord in Alaska terms, um but yeah, they're, they're outside of Boston, outside of Concord. Okay? Anything else?
Where's the significant river, the Erie Canal?
Oh. The Erie Canal, speak up Aiden. It was big and it was deep, wow, yes. I think maybe they're both ren- American Renaissance writers, what do you think, very deep thinking, transcendental thinking there?
Is that the one that went from the Great Lakes, it basically made it so that you didn't have to cross through the Appalachians? Uh, like they have been, it was that first big canal that really started all the canal building. And it connected New York and basically east of the Appalachians, or west of the Appalachians.
Yes, yes, very good.
Everything kind of went from crossing the Appalachians to going up and around.
Okay, yes, so the Erie Canal, it changed the routes, which meant that what for the population?
Shipping costs went down.
Shipping costs went very, went way down.
The larger plantations that were close to it, they could ship there.
Okay, larger plantations that were close to it, so previous to this, previous to the canal and the Great Lakes, where were the big towns and cities? On the rivers, and then where that, where were they? Well, they had already been on the oceans. And they'll be where the railroads are, but when you're talking canals water, water, which, which water? You said one. The Great Lakes, okay? So now you've gone and you're shifting population from some of these river cities to lake cities, okay, Chicago, think Chicago and Detroit, right? Where they're really developing. So the significance was, on a scale of one to ten? Nine, ten, yeah, very significant, yes. Cause it changed demographics, it changed the transportation, it changed um almost everything for a very long time. Until the railroads took over, but even when the railroad started, the canals could still ship cheaper than the railroads for a good ten, twenty years. Okay? What other questions?
The Adams-Onus Treaty?
Ah. Hmm, what was that about? The Adams-Onus Treaty, what was that about? Oh my goodness, okay, so which Adams? Which Adams signed the treaty? Oh, there's a, there's a very wise woman, she's looking in the index. That's okay, you could do that. John Quincy, John Quincy Adams. Okay, Secretary of State, meaning what? So he obviously wasn't president at the time.
So, oh, wait, was this the guy who was trying to gain popularity in the South?
No.
Who was the one dealing all that with uh?
Okay. So Ivy's got it open, what can you tell us Ivy? What is the Adams-Onus Treaty? Ivy's turn.
Oh, okay.
Speak up. Whatever you feel comfortable doing.
In eighteen nineteen, Spain agreed to the Adams-Onus Treaty. By its terms, Spain ceded east Florida to the United States, renounced its claims to west Florida and agreed to a southern border of the United States west of the Mississippi by which the United States conceded that Texas was not part of the Louisiana Purchase, while Spain agreed to a northern limit to its claims to the west coast. It thereby left the United States free to pursue its interest in Oregon.
Okay, so map eight point three in your book shows you some of the boundaries of these treaties, yes? Okay, so how significant was the Adams-Onus Treaty? Good guess, good guess Brian, pretty significant, yes. Um, because it eliminated more boundaries. From the Louisiana Purchase? What do you mean about France?
You sold, you sold Florida, is it Spain?
Spain is the one who just signed the treaty, yep, yep.
The Louisiana Purchase was purchased from France.
That's correct. Correct. So when was the Adams-Onus Treaty signed? Okay? Alright, does that explain it? Brian? Have a better idea, no, who asked the question about Adams-Onus Treaty? Aiden, does that explain it better?
Once I looked it in there.
Okay. Alright, well it's eight twenty-nine. I know you all have uh have time, okay, if you have any other questions, feel free to call me or email me.
I take it it's before three tomorrow to the practice.
You're welcome.